The big, you know, the cost associated with this. The three, three uh renovations for the two higher options. Those could be taken into consideration again, correct?
Yeah.
And here, it's not like.
It has to go back in front of the board, the mass.
Yeah, it's kind of like. Yeah. Happy not tomorrow. So this is it. And we got out of. I just say this. It's a, this is our. Maybe you know, can we. We're gonna have to take things step back and then we're evaluating what our position is gonna be about the whole career defense and why. Uh, everybody said we need to start back. And so that we said, it's not like we don't improve the new building that we uh, I think we belong to now. And uh, not to. That's what we can do. It's not that fifteen, you know, two twenty. If you only get two more than nine hundred students, the state basically tells me that, you know, finish your plan.
Correct. Talking about that, that's one of the terms we talked about. The end of the year, they give concerns with the cost of the new build. And a few people brought that up on the split board that mentioned, you know, can they work back and get.
You stop.
Yeah.
And then.
Right.
And then.
Say they talk about. We can hold that down. But now we're going to look.
No, it didn't.
It's just for. Oh, if we need more than one. Just if they make a pass, so. If one town could vote it down and the rest voted down.
And everyone else.
And we're like, but two hundred town meeting for one hour down.
And it's required as a model for a thirteen years. This was essentially happened over the last two years. It's sort of a traditional requirement, you know, and as I said, it's not like the idea of an old school. Was that, it was more an educational, you know, cost effective education appropriate solution. At this point, the state agrees based on two years of study and analysis of the most cost effective education appropriate solution. There's no need to school. Um, and that's exploring, that's what they want to give us, you know, there's a lot of. And I think sure for that, but pretty much, you know, they're rather put this one down here. And whatever, you know, if you potentially be your uh, dedication or something, you'd be qualified to a hundred percent paid for. I don't know, I have a school district, so that's a seat for.
Part of what we, sorry, um, temporarily. Part of what we need to do in this area is raising is to address some of those questions. Focus on how did, how did the building committee arrive at this decision. Set aside might appear to be cheaper options with different. And that's where the project team will be able to get into the. Quite necessary, it's, it will be a necessity. The MSBA allowed us to step away. But again, we don't expect that the community, our group focus on this as much as we can. So at least we, we owe the people who are, okay, it's getting closer to this. It's getting closer to the end of the process. Explain, again, I'm writing this design in this location with this number of students. And we should put it in detail, but since that's. That'll certainly. Window of our communities in late summer. So. Your comments and that. Right, if you. Talking about, uh, we'll probably start to be a part of an agenda that we would have. And we're just going to. Going to, I was asking other folks for other concerns as well.
Okay. Okay.
Mr. Chair, would you, would you entertain a reset us for just a moment before.
Thank everybody for giving a little more time to normal. Next will be the votes for two minutes. Eleven, ten votes for two minutes over. This is twenty second, twenty four, twenty two minutes. It's good for the committee meeting. Motion made by Sedgley, second by. Having ten, any discussion on the minutes?
Okay, it's Mr. Chairman, um, we have two minutes, the thirty three minutes in the month.
Yep. Okay, these will be the, I believe we'll be doing the same thing on. This will be the ones. Now, I'll take a vote for all votes, for Andrew Kess, Tom Hippie.
Yes.
Cindy Ballman. Seven. Two minutes, three minutes.
Yes.
Thank you, Kennedy. George Cooney, yes. Kim Kaufman, yes. Bob Mahoney, yes. Jeff Manning, yes. Bob Mello.
Yes.
Frank, Frank Bolone.
Yes, yes.
Thank you. Tom Petraselli, yes. Dusser Riden, yes. Dan Salbucci, yes. Keith Boyle.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. I'll turn it over to Kevin and we'll go through.
All right, so we. All right, I'm gonna just present a couple of updates and then turn it over to Carl. So the first item, uh, invoices from previous month, including invoice number fourteen from Leftfield. Twenty thousand five hundred, um, invoice number nine from DRA, ninety thousand dollars. And um, another invoice from DRA, it's ten thousand one hundred eighty nine dollars. Thirty cents for a total of one hundred twenty eight thousand six hundred eighty nine dollars and thirty cents. For your.
Okay, uh, I'll entertain a motion to approve that invoice. Some of them. Second by. George. Any discussion on the invoice? Sing now, I'll follow all. Father would be us. Tom Hippie, yes. Keith Boyle.
Yes.
George Cooney, yes. Chandler Baldwin.
Yes.
Kim Kaufman, yes. Bob Mahoney, yes. Jeff Manning, yes. Bob Mello.
Yes.
I think I missed you in the last one, but.
No, you got me.
Okay. Frank Bolone.
Yes.
Tom Petraselli, yes. Dusser Riden, yes. And Dan Salbucci, yes. Motion carries.
All right, um, this is very similar to what we saw last month, uh, just a high level budget update. At this point, uh, about seventy nine percent of the feasibility study budget has been committed and fifty percent has been expended. Uh, there's uh, it's, there exact to last uh, time we gave an update, there is still. Uh, four hundred ten thousand, two hundred twenty dollars uncommitted funds, uh, we anticipate roughly two hundred thousand dollars. Um, and additional services testing that will need to take place between now and um, probably August. And that would be, this budget is roughly a little over two hundred, uh, two hundred thousand dollars in remaining funds from the feasibility study. I believe this is exactly what we presented last month's changes.
Okay. Any questions? Yeah, are we on budget?
Yes, we're, we're currently under budget. And again, went over this last time, just a high level snapshot of the MSBA's uh, schedule. As you're aware, it's probably going to the April Board Directors Meeting and um. Will be targeting the uh, the August, sorry, the October Board Meeting for uh, approval. But that requires a sufficient BMSBA in August, so. Carl and his team will work hard, uh, finish up some, some plans so we can get front of the cost estimators, it'll be three. Three different cost estimates that, cost estimates that happen over the next month. It's gonna be a good gut check on some of the budgets, uh, the project estimates and the budgets that are, that are presented to us by. But um, happy to answer any questions if, if folks have any.
Mr. Chair, I mean, just to figure back on what Kevin was saying, so while this is currently the school building committee that's, that's functioning right now. Uh, I would just point out that to get to that mid-August uh, incentive, that bullet in the center of the slide. Uh, while, while the school committee doesn't have regular meetings typically in August. And while the school committee will likely not have its July meeting until July twenty fourth, a little later than usual next month. It is possible that the building committee might need to schedule a one-off meeting that isn't a joint meeting. In order to make sure that building committee members are aware of where the numbers and the design are going. So we'll try to be very clear when we communicate to schedule meetings. It might feel like it's the same meeting, but it's entirely possible that to get to those, to get to that mid-August deadline. The building committee might have to have an extra meeting here or there between now and mid-August. Just to, just to mention that as a placeholder for.
We'll have, we'll have more information at that point, we'll present to the school building committee. The package that is going to the MSBA, so there will be um, the least of updates.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I think that's all I had, I'm gonna. I'm gonna share another document so Carl can kind of take us through it.
Just keep going, uh, with the plans. The plans and the.
The PDA has a high, has a higher resolution.
Great, yeah, it consumes that too. Kevin, when will we have an idea from MSBA about the percentages, the final percentages?
Um. Certainly by October, but I would say. We.
What would you do in the month of advance?
Yeah, yeah, especially at the month, the month in advance, I, I think we'll know ahead of that, I really, there won't be anything that moves the needle. I, I don't believe after we submit to MSBA, we have a lot of uh, communication and prep meetings with them ahead of time. So if they're not surprised, they're not surprised, so. They will have a really good idea of what the budget's gonna look like, the whole thing. Um, promise to add, you know, in a sense, how much is it gonna cost and how much does it gotta give us essentially? Um, even in August, and I think a couple, you know, a couple of weeks after that.
Okay, so it's like doing taxes where you, you submit to the IRS what you think you owe. They review it and they let you know if they agree or not. When we submit, we actually give a budget listing what we think is eligible for reimbursement and what is ineligible. Sometimes MSBA finds a few more things that are ineligible. We always try to advocate under your behalf and Kevin too, I'm sure. So there's a little bit of give and take there in the month of September, probably prior to. So September one is. Yeah. Thank you. But it's not huge swings every time, like we know, we know what your percentage is.
Uh, I just.
Were they seeing that?
I don't think they were seeing it. There you go. Okay. Yeah, I'll watch it.
There, there. Sorry about that. So we, since we last met, we've, uh, been working hard, our whole team, not just DRA, but our consultants do. Mechanical, electrical, site, civil, all the engineers uh, in, in uh. Building this package of information that's gonna go to, uh, as Kevin said, three independent cost estimators simultaneously. But they are working independently at first so that we can get a good check. Uh, you know, one of the teams is Suffolk, the firm that's gonna build it. The other two are just professional cost estimators who are in the business, that's all they do. And so they have their own kind of good database of what things are costing these days and so forth. Um, DRA hired one, Leftfield hired one. Uh, they produce estimates, it, it'll take about three weeks uh, to get a draft. Then, once we see those three numbers, we get together, in this case, it might literally be in the same room. Might do it virtually, but through uh, uh, a process called reconciliation so that the estimators can. Uh, kind of quiz each other about how many tons of steel did you have on the job, I only had, you know, this and. How many cubic yards of concrete, and they go through and try to make sure they're seeing the same thing in our plans. Cause they are, e- even though it's a pretty thick package of information, there are still a lot of gaps that. Estimators have to use their best judgment on the fill, and so that's one of the, the processes and procedures that will happen. Uh, and will come, they might not, they'll, they'll never come exactly the same number. Because, you know, one guy thinks steel is worth, you know, two thousand dollars a ton, another guy thinks it's worth twenty one hundred and fifty dollars a ton. And he's gonna stick by it, and that's his personal opinion. We don't necessarily wanna twist his arm in that regard, but we wanna make sure they're seeing the same quantity of bricks and steel and concrete and so forth. Uh, and, and so it gives us a, a good uh, level of confidence in, in the numbers. Uh, and that's what we'll share with you, one of those meetings that might be needed when we lay those numbers on the table. And after you get up off the floor, it's, oh my god, sticker shack or something. You, you, you know, you, you tell us whether uh, you're comfortable with these numbers because we are setting a budget, remember? As to what we all wanna live with going forward. And generally, we will have uh, a list of items that have some variability to that. That will, if you say, no, we, we, this number's too high, you know, for whatever reason, you think in comparison to. To other projects or, you know, what the town's going forward. You want us to look at uh, reducing the price by accepting some of these alternatives, we can consider that at this time. Or, you know, we can think about, well, let's keep those in our back pocket. Um, let's shoot for this budget if we need to tighten up going forward afterwards. Uh, because in the next year, as we're finishing the plans, costs go up or some other things happen. Uh, who knows, that, that there might be changes of a variety of reasons. We, we have some uh, ability to tighten the budget down the road. Um, so that, that's kind of why these meetings, the end of July, beginning of August, will, will be important in, in that regard. So I just wanna share kind of the status of things and just point out, there, there haven't been many changes. Cause we are at that point, we're spending more time and documenting the information so that we can give it to the estimators. Not really changing anything, but one of the things I wanna point out on the site plan, um, is. If I can advance this line, uh, oh, maybe I have to flip it with the accent. Is it a scroll? Are you just? There you go. It scrolled too far. Um, so this is a black and white version of the site plan, but I just wanna point out. This, this development, again, remember where we are, here's Webster Street, over here is Main Street. The proposed building, one of the existing schools right here. Um, we've highlighted this piece of work. To get the uh, estimators to price that, that scope of work separately. So that we know how much it costs, so that we can share it with you and decide, do we want this in the scope going forward or not? And there's a couple of different ways that could happen. One, we could just agree, yes, it's in the scope along with everything else. Um, that's one way, or we could say, no, we, we don't wanna, for whatever reason, whether it's cost or. Butter considerations or traffic considerations, we could say, no, let's take it out of the project, we'll know how much that's worth then. And we can pretty quickly come to a new budget number for the whole project without that. Or we could continue to call it an alternate going forward. Uh, you can have alternates when you go out to bridge from no public construction. Generally, we think of them as uh, uh, you wanna be happy with the base scope a- as is. In case you can't afford any of the alternates, the alternate should be things that are quote unquote, nice to have. But not required for the project, like, you know, if you need twenty classrooms in the building, you don't make two classrooms an alternative in eighteen, the base. You say, no, we need twenty classrooms. But if, if there are some things like, you know, common ones are lights on football field. We'll say that's an alternate, we could live, we could play football on Saturday mornings, not Friday nights. Uh, maybe, I'm not saying that for this project, but I mean, in some projects, something like that would be an alternate. Uh, an add-on, and if the budget, if the bids come in, you know, favorably, or the work progresses favorably. If you don't use, uh, spend your contingency, then you can, you know, buy those things uh, a- as an alternate.
Yes, I had a quick question. Is um, the steel made in the United States, you know, how much of a priority is made in USA? For this project and i- is it a union job? Are you gonna see uh, underwriters, laparies on the electrical fixtures? You know, that kind of thing, it's, it's, I mean, you can, you can buy a, a light switch for nineteen cents or even buy a real one. And it's eighty nine cents, something like that, so.
Well, the, the MSBA does address that. There, there is a provision that, I forget the exact way they worded it, but that to the best of our ability, we are to specify uh, American-made products.
Yeah.
Uh, in that regard, there, there was a time when a lot of steel did come from outside the United States, yeah, from China.
Yeah.
Canada, um, it still oftentimes does come from Canada, although it may be, you know, steel is made from ore and. Uh, I forget the other ingredients, but the ore may come from the United States, get shipped to Canada, get processed, and the steel come back. So where does it really come from, you know? So there is a provision, it's not, it's not a total restriction. You know, but it does say, and again, I, I can get you the words, but it's something like to the best of our ability, uh, things, products should come from the US. Um, in terms of a union job, not literally a union job, but all public works in Massachusetts have to pay prevailing wages to the workers. And those prevailing wages are set by the state and they're generally in accordance with union wages. Would they, in the area of the project?
Would um, it being a union job, does that restrict whether the students can be on the job site or can be involved in some aspect of the project?
There are sort of restrictions in general about uh, the students or the school actually doing some of the work.
Yeah.
It, it, it's kind of um, uh, double edged. We, we want the school to be able to do things in the, in the proposed new building. Um, but whether the students can literally work with Suffolk Construction.
Yeah.
That's, that's generally not allowed. They can get hired as a co-op in the summer. But during school, they can't provide like free labor to Suffolk as students to do some work, even if they're qualified. But, but there may be parts of the work we can leave out. That, and still, you know, satisfactorily finish the job.
Yeah.
And get a certificate of occupancy, and then the first couple of years that the buildings occupied, the. Whatever carpentry students, electrical students, plumbing students could do some things that, that were intentionally left out, left out of Suffolk's scope. So that the students get good experience working on the building.
So Suffolk, Suffolk hires child labor, that's what you're saying?
What, what we could do, Mr. Chair, what we could do, one example in talking to Carl's team was. They were looking at some furniture that um, maybe having a series of, I'm gonna call them cubbies at some elementary school. But basically some squares that kids could put their backpacks in rather than literal rows.
In, in each classroom.
Right, like a matrix of squares. Well, our kids could build that rather than buy that furniture.
Yeah.
Uh, any of the outbuildings that we might be considering around any of the playing fields, maybe an outbuilding for horticulture or small equipment. Maybe some of the landscaping, maybe some of the plantings that we see on some of these renderings could be scraped out of the scope. And, and, and we, we could take care of that, so. As long as it's not a mixing of the prevailing wage labor with the contractor, with the contractor.
Yeah.
We, we have some leverage to, to decide, you know, keep that out of the scope, we'll handle that downstream. So there will be a savings. And we have another project.
And we will be ongoing dialogue between Suffolk, our team, and obviously the school to determine where their learning opportunities. That's one I'm afraid with work, there's plenty of them, they're doing that, they're just going to check right now. And where are their opportunities that we can save money and do more later, so.
They'll also see what the prevailing wage can do for you.
Yes.
That's right. So it, it could be an incentive.
Yes.
Usually is.
This alternative, one other, one other um, potential for it i- is that. When we talk with the various construction managers, including Suffolk, uh, the, the area to build the building is fairly limited. To keep the existing school in operation and have enough room of the existing. When you think about, you know, where do a hundred workers park or a hundred and fifty workers park? When, when this construction is going full steam, there, there'll probably be in that order of magnitude number of workers here. So it's a possibility that we could develop that parcel of mainstream even on a temporary basis. Just clear it, level it, put down some gravel so that during construction, it could be used for construction traffic. Not necessarily have to commit to paving it and, and doing full-blown uh, future work and you could, if, if for whatever reason, yeah, anybody. Come out in with the butters or something that we don't wanna use it permanently, but it might still have value on a temporary basis.
How many cars do you think the potential alternate could park?
I, I think we've quantified it, what'd you say, ninety-nine or ninety? Ninety-nine, so ninety-nine, ninety-nine basis.
Yeah.
Or the other thought, you, you can see the yellow school buses?
Yeah.
We, we make sure that we can park them in this option, you know, in, in these locations, in this configuration.
Yeah.
Um, there was a, the thought also possibly putting the buses there. Uh, and, and getting park, more parking closer to the school as a trade off. But this option was favored as the uh, most convenient and, and uh, practical for lo- locating. And, and we've included additional buses than the school already owns, since the enrollment's increasing to nine hundred, we know that the number of buses is increasing. And in this configuration too, we point out, um, maybe you've seen this kind of diagonal. Um, used to be old Greyhound bus stations would park this way because it, it allows you to enter the bus, you know, the door is, is accessible. When they're a little bit offset like that. So theoretically, in the afternoon, it, it, all day long, the buses could park there. And at pickup time in the afternoon, the kids get on the bus without the bus moving. The, the bus doesn't have to line up or travel around the building at all, they could stay right there, the kids know I'm on bus number eighteen. And they know where number eighteen parks. Um, uh, so there's some convenience to that, both in safety and, and movement and efficiency of loading and, and moving the kids out. We also know that those little blue vehicles, those are some of the smallest uh, vans that the school has too. We wanted to make sure we had some space for those as well, in addition to the number of parking spaces total on, on the side. So the, th- this is the way, um, we're gonna present it to the cost estimators, like we said. It identifies not only the development of this parcel, but the connecting walkway. And remember, that walkway crosses a piece of weapons that makes a bridge, you know, so that we minimize the impact on the weapons. So it's not a roadway, although a golf cart or a service vehicle could drive on it, but it's not a, it's not a roadway connection. So that, that, just wanted to share that with you since that's a. New issue, I think, that we haven't showed you, oops, keep going too fast to the score. So the plans are coming along, uh, very few changes to, to really note, um, here at, at this level. Um, the, the uh, parts and pieces are still pretty much in the same configuration. Um, and we, we're analyzing the, the areas to make sure they match up with the program, the, the size of the shops and so forth. Um, we have had input from our um, building code consultant. So I think one of the new things maybe this stair right here, I'll show you that in, in a moment. Um, uh, on the, on the second floor as well, but the locker rooms, remember, are here underneath the gym. The, the way the students at gym class get up to the gym is using this stair right here. Because there's a front door and a back door, so to speak, to each of these locker rooms. So, you know, and, and uh, they would enter generally off of this corner, they would. Then, if they're heading up to the, to the gym, or if it's after school and it's the basketball team, they, they use this stair. Uh, going up to the gym, so they're not mixing with the public, they're not going out, you know, into the, into the main lobby to get up to the gym. They, they have a private stair. But when you have a, a gym on a second floor, um, of this size, it needs three distinct exit points. Not just two, you hear about two ways out of the space, well, when you get over um, uh. This size space, this number of occupants need three ways out. And, and, and one time we thought we could avoid having this stair by having one way here and one way here and the third here. But unfortunately, they're not separated in a, in our code consultant calculations. So we, we did add this stair here, which we foresee purely being for egress purposes. Might even, you know, we'll think about it, you'll have an exit sign, obviously, but it might be one of those that. Um, it only goes outside, you go into the stair and you can only get out, it doesn't connect back into the building. Maybe even on the gym side, you know, it, it has an alarm, if you don't want people ever to use it. You know, an alarm will go off if you push the. if you push the, the push bar to get into it. But here's that, that stair from the locker room. So, you know, the basketball players have a direct access to the gym and the public's coming in on this side of the, of the gym there. So that's one minor change that, that we added, that, that third stair there.
How many locker rooms are there underneath?
There, there's, within the, the boys, I'm sorry, within the boys and girls locker space. Pretty sensitive.
Carl, I've seen some, there are some arrows on the far right. I don't know if that's easier, below the number two and the number nine there.
Oh, there, there.
And, and yeah. And then there's also a plus, there's a plus.
Thank you. It's hard to see from this angle, but. So, so we have a boys locker room, a girls locker room. We have a gender-neutral little locker space here as well. But within the boys and girls rooms, there are two team spaces. We call them team locker rooms in addition to the phys ed lockers that are separate. So you, you might say there are four team locker rooms.
I just think they're visiting, visiting teams coming.
Yeah.
Because you don't want to be sharing the same locker room space with the visiting teams.
Yeah, there, there's a couple, couple things there. Either, we, we do have, you know, off this third locker room, there is a shower and a toilet room accessible. There, there's space there. If it's, you know, a Friday night or a weekend and, and the opposite sex is not using their locker room, then sometimes we see, you know, if it's a boys basketball game, the visiting team uses the girls locker room. That, that's one way to save space. The, the other is up on the, the second floor. If I go up, and this way, up another way. On, on the second floor, we have, right here, there's, there's a toilet room off of the, the gym and the athletic director's office. There's also a classroom right here that we see as a multipurpose space. It would be like a team meeting space. At halftime, the team could meet in there or before basketball practice. Team could meet in there for strategy, talk or, or whatever, right adjacent to the gym. So that could be also the team, the visiting teams' assembly area at halftime if they want to meet. Because again, these days, we find a lot of teams dress at home before they get on the bus and come. And they don't necessarily need a locker room for taking a shower or changing. They, they need a locker room for at halftime or before to have a team meeting in private to go over strategy or something like that, so. But this, this other, I'm sorry, small toilet room and shower right here could be used by officials. So the referees would have a spot separate from the athletes too. So, and we, again, you can sense we're trying to make as, as many spaces to do as many things as we can without adding to the, to the size of the building. So we should keep that in mind when we go up to the public and talk about the cost and that we've tried to keep the size of this building to, you know, an optimal size, not keep increasing it just because of, well, you know, once a week or once a year, we need this space, so we just add another space. We'd end up with a building, you know, twenty percent larger or something. So we try to get as much. And, and, you know, we've talked about this multipurpose auditorium too. One of the, one of the challenges here, I think we should come up with a better name than auditorium. Because people think of that as, you know, that's music and theater and. This, this space, we, we envision it to be used for wrestling practice. When the seats are tracked and you have a flat floor, it, it's, you know, perfect. It's right next to the locker rooms and the gym. And you don't have to be wrestling in the cafeteria or, or something or cheerleading practice, things like that. So it, it's a real, truly multipurpose space.
Is the gym, I mean, that line where we're in that building and we have eight hundred students, where do we have graduation? If we can't have it in the fields, if it's raining, is there, will there be space in the building?
Mr. Chair, I, that, that gym is a standard-sized gym, about twelve thousand square feet. From perspective, our gym is about eight thousand square feet. So, so what was the standard a thousand years ago? And it's gonna, there'd be, there'd be climate control, so that's another big plus. I, I think, I think it's, I think it's possible. Or we're just gonna go with a good old fashioned rain day.
What we've seen, Dan, is in, in addition to sitting in the bleachers, you could set up a stage at one end and, and put folding chairs on the flat floor.
Yeah.
You could get, probably, we'll check in the egresses with the number of doors and stairs. You could get probably fifteen hundred people in there.
Oh, okay.
Every, every graduate and their family.
Yeah. No, because it's a palace. We tried doing it in a gym, but then we have to use the lunchroom because there's over too crowded and no room.
Yeah.
And then we end up doing a cell to a music circus, which had one team on the stage.
Now that was very mentioned.
The, the other thing that schools do too, to then have, if you want to get, is you'd simulcast it and people are in the cafeteria with screens and the events going on in the gym. Yeah.
Can you show me with the stairways out in case of an emergency?
Yeah, yeah.
Carl, could you go over the magnifying glass in the lower right corner with the plus on it? We might lose some of the legend in the upper left corner, but maybe that'll just project a question. We reorient that a little bit there.
Thank you.
Actually, scroll a little bit.
Yeah, a little bit.
Okay.
So first of all, the way you come into the building, everybody comes in the front door. The public to attend an event either in the auditorium or the gym would come up the main stair here. Or if they need an elevator, there's an elevator right here. Some of the word "mes" means, sorry, it's covered up by the "e" there. But he'd come up the stairs. So the public would enter this way into the gym or this way into the auditorium. The egresses from here, you go back, the way the code reads too, is generally at least fifty percent of the population leaves the same way they came, even in urgency, even though they can see an exit signs there. They just, human nature, they exit the way they came in. So we, we have to accommodate like fifty percent of the population through this. So these people would leave, and when they come out here, they still have two ways to go. They can go this way to this stair, or they can go back down the stair they came up. So they have two ways out. Then the, the, the second and third way out of the gym is directly into this stair or directly into this stair.
I just wanted to make sure I was reading this right.
Yeah, and they both directly lead out, kind of on the ground floor. So it, it's, it's a very safe arrangement in that regard. And, and the same with the auditorium too. You know, there are multiple ways out of the auditorium as well. It, it's, the population is only about four hundred and fifty. That's the target for that. But it still has, you know, multiple ways out. And on, and on the ground floor, if we go back, oops. Here, there, you know, there's the exit out of this stair or straight out this way. So you can exit out of the auditorium or again, you can go out to the main lobby, go out the front door or, or go up, if I scroll up a little bit. Go, go directly on the back of the building too.
So between the restaurant and the culinary, there'll be doorways for everybody to get out.
Yeah, yeah. We do think, you know, there'll be some doors across these hallways because they're really not public, you know, you don't, it's kind of like a backup house. So in an event, you would close those doors and, you know, the public would be out here in the common space. And there's plenty of toilet facilities here, you can see. And again, in, in these areas on both floors, there's men's room, women's room, and then there's a, a non-gender, unisex, individual toilet room as well on both floors there. So that, that those are the taken areas. One of the things to point out, I think I might have pointed this out before. One of the advantages or opportunities, you might say, with having this multipurpose space here on the ground floor, we, we can put an overhead door right here off the driveway in the back. You could drive a car in there. So if the automotive folks want to show off their car painting skills or something or have a car show, you could literally drive into that space. And it's a slab on grade concrete, so it can support.
Or parking for school.
Private parking, get out of the rain. Or if you have, you know, whatever, some other kind of science fair or something you had to load things in that are pretty heavy, you could load them directly in. Or sometimes stage people in, in the future, you know, sometimes want to roll things in. It's right at great. So that, that's an opportunity there too. So I think that's about all the, the changes there. Otherwise. So the, the plan is, is developing to, again, where in addition to these hallways, which are generally long and straight, which are good for efficiency and good for supervision, but we do like to put a couple of areas off of them here that are kind of collabora, we call them collaboration areas, but they're kind of breakout areas that, they're still part of the hallway. It's just an alcove kind of off of the hallway there. And it, it, it gives the students an opportunity, or sometimes even during a class, you know, in one of these adjacent spaces, a pair of students are, or have to work on something together. They, they make use of that space. It's something new, you don't have it today. And oftentimes, it takes a couple of years for teachers to figure out how to use it for students, how to use it or how to supervise it. The good thing is, it is next to classrooms for supervision. There, there's also the opportunity to do it here at this kind of space because the teacher planning room is right next to it. So again, there's, there's good supervision. But these are areas, for instance, if I zoom in even more here, there's that plus. Just slide this over. You see that light line there? That, that's the indication of building in a bench there that students could sit on. That's something that we might design right now, but leave, leave out of the project and say your carpentry, your carpentry students are gonna build that in the future. We, we trust them, they can do the quality that's appropriate and, and so forth. And, and so there's opportunities like that in, in the school. Sometimes too, in the public spaces, we'll, we'll have a wall that's meant for display cases. And that's another project that students could do.
We actually do that.
Another question, Tom. What is the time difference a lot, a lot of students in the, in one class from the other?
Currently, four minutes.
Four minutes?
Yeah.
Do you want from that point to that point, four minutes?
We can calculate that. There's, there's sort of rules of thumb. The fact that they're stacked on stairs too, that helps. But we, we do have, you can see that the classrooms are all here. You, you know, the furthest point is the locker room. So getting to gym might, might be the longest walk from the third floor at this end, you know, to the locker room if you had gym class. We can calculate what that is. It, it's probably still within, what is it, four minutes right now?
Yeah, for the passage higher academic cycle. They're gonna be, they're gonna be in the, the blue spaces stacked on top of one another between floors two and three.
And there's one, two, three stairs.
And at the end of the day, they, they might go down to the first floor for their related class. So it might be close. It's not, it's not a strong range that kids might go from.
Could we jump if they're like five, six minutes?
Oh, sure. Actually, we could.
We could find the issue.
Yeah.
Students a lot of them are gonna, if they have to go to the bathroom, they leave the classroom to the bathroom.
We have, if we are able to get the student comments sized the way it is, we will not need five lunches. We currently run five lunches. If we can reduce the number of lunches, we can al, we can also find additional time to play to the schedule.
Okay.
This is sized for three lunches. And that's when you have nine hundred students. So the first couple of years, you could probably have two lunches.
Yeah, we've got some.
Go ahead, George.
I wondered how close the auditorium floor, which you said was on grade. How is on grade in relation to the water table?
That, that's a, a challenging thing for the entire building. The entire first floor, we're setting at about, what's currently out there, we, the geotechnical investigation revealed there were a few spots where the water was down about four feet from your current football field, your baseball field. We are raising the building about three feet at, at a minimum above that right now. So, and we will have underslapped drainage on the first floor too, so that if, if it should ever rise, it, it will spill directly away from the, the school. It won't affect the floor and so forth. That will cost us some money because we have to bring in fill to, to, you know, raise that. We don't have any, we don't have any mountain of gravel that we can cut down to fill on site, so it's gonna have to come from on site. But it's worth it in the long run.
Yeah.
And, and you know, the ground is sloping from Webster Street, obviously down to the football field already. In the end, we're gonna even that out a little bit. It, it won't be leveled, it's still gonna be a little bit lower, but it'll be a much gradual, you know, if it's not like five or six-foot drop to the football field you have now. It, it'll be a.
There'll be plenty of drainage.
Two percent.
There'll be plenty of drainage on site.
But we had a school, the old, old school, where the gym was sit, was on the bottom floor. It was down about six steps, you know, when you go to the gym. During a heavy rain, that floor was all sined, was all wet. So when we tore it down and put the police station there, we made sure it was all.
Yeah, and the schools, you know, the buildings like this these days don't have basements. We don't have any. The, the lowest thing would be, you know, the elevator pit. It's probably below the floor level a little bit, and we water through that. But that still will be probably out of the water table, but it'll be a good waterproof job there. And the top floor, I think we pointed out last time that, that one changed maybe since we saw the plans last time, we're introducing this corridor again to get to this stair so that this floor too had access to three stairs as well. And we managed to, you know, locate these offices and, and small classrooms that used to be along this corridor. We basically relocated them here, so this part of the building came in and offset it. So we didn't have to add a lot of square footage to the, to the program in order to achieve that.
I have one additional question. What, how long does it take for a fire grill to empty the current building?
Two minutes?
Two minutes?
I mean, it's, we've gotten high marks from, from fire.
Do you think we'll be able, how long is it gonna take to get nine hundred people out of the building? Or one more?
I'm not, I, I.
I wouldn't know the number, George, but I would assume that.
Yeah, I, I could, we could answer.
I also had a, a very interesting question, and that is, where is Dr. Hickey's office located? Right here? You're not going from the quarter, you're got the quarter off, so I guess you'll let us.
It's much more effective to stay here.
So we wanted to share the three-dimensional views as they're coming along. Again, this is information that we go into the, the cost estimators. Here's an overall view of it. Again, basically, there's three parts to this school with two connectors, you might say. That's the way we think of it and, and organize it. And the, the massing of, of the building kind of reflects that. We try to keep the scale appropriate to what we think.
Do you have enough colors?
Yeah, if, if we look at it straight on, this, this is literally from Webster Street. If you were standing there six hundred feet away, this is about how big the building would look if you could take it all in without turning your head sort of. And you, you can see, it, it is a three-story building, but it is broken up in, in certain parts. And we've emphasized kind of one gable roof here to give it literally what we call New England farmhouse feel. It's kind of like a barn, but obviously it's a gymnasium. But the way certain farmhouses have what used to be called the big house, the little house and the barn, and they were connected. We've used that same strategy here. We think it, it'll help the building fit in. And we're trying to keep it fairly simple and straightforward, particularly as we go around to the, to the backside too. I'm sorry, I'll show you the entrance. Again, fairly modest. We're not making grand gestures here, but because this is so big, you know, an element, this, this is like fifty feet tall to that peak. So, and you can see, there's a door.
Is there a porch roof there?
There's, there's a porch roof to bring the scale down. So that it feels like, you know, a human scale.
Bring your rocking chair.
And we can utilize that porch. Obviously, you know, provides a little protection on a rainy night like this at the, at the front doors at the entrance. But also, this is the restaurant next door. They, they could have a few outdoor tables adjacent to it as well, under that porch. So that, again, we don't want to do things just for the sake of doing them. We're trying to get, you know, functionality out of it. We're trying to get, you know, functionality out of it with that.
Is the porch roof a metal roof?
Yes, that's standing seam metal. That's what would be on the gym as well. So in that sense, it is like a New England farmhouse. You see, I couldn't remind you, we had a lot of metal roofs there, so.
I have a question, are the flat roofs, and the building, right? Have a flat roof there?
It's flat roof, yes.
Is there a fence up there? Is there, is there a fireplace?
Yeah, if there's any equipment located within, I think it's like ten or fifteen feet to the edge of a roof, yes, we put a guardrail.
That's what we got it, because if there's a fire and there's smoke and a pipe like that.
What we also do.
Kamal has a picture of the back of the building showing.
So at the back of the building, what we're going to do, because there is a lot of rooftop equipment, we haven't drawn it in here, all of it. But there is a lot of rooftop equipment. This edge of the roof will be a parapet, will actually come up and be a wall. So you can't fall over the edge.
Especially if it's smoking, they're up there fighting.
Yes, yes, yes. And we don't have any skylights, that's another issue. Sometimes firefighters don't like skylights, because if it's smoky, they step on it, they fall through. So they want.
Working on the equipment, don't do skylights.
So you can see, here's some of the rooftop equipment. We tried to position it in such a way that you don't see it from the front side. And we don't have to buy screens, you know. But we use the gym as a screen. We use this little monitor as a screen and so forth. And the other thing we want to point out is just that the backside of the building, again, we think of it as straightforward and modest and economical, because nobody really sees it except, you know, a few delivery men or people and shop instructors who park back there. We're not going to invest a lot in expensive materials or expensive kinds of detailing on the back. It can be the, you know, the economical side of the building.
Is there, so what we do on slopes on the roof, flat roofs of the school? They go up there and?
It would have to be extraordinary. It's been years since that has happened. But it has been necessary, twenty, the winter of twenty fifteen.
What we, what we do is, first of all, obviously, everything's designed in current codes. And generally, with our structures in here, a little bit overdesigned. We will give you a guide that says, if it's wet, heavy snow, and it's X feet deep, that's when you should go up there and get rid of some of it. And by the way, when you get rid of it, you don't have to get rid of all of it. Please don't scrape the roof with your snow blowers, they ruin the roofs. You just have to get rid of, you know, maybe half of it, or something like that. But that's very rare occasion, because of the way the codes are these days.
Before when that happened, was it well, pretty much when they had all those cages in, when they had all those staff as well, meaning you got your, you know, roofs. That's why it happened, because the spans were too far.
Pre-engineered away.
I don't think you go back to something we've already talked about. I just want to make sure I understand. So the ninety-nine parking spaces that are off of Main Street, we can keep going back to. That, the potential alternative, we're going to get a price within without that, correct?
Yes, yeah. We'll be able to quantify that.
Yeah, so we'll be able to look at it and kind of know that there would have been some serious concern with the butters, there would be some serious traffic concerns, things like that. I thought we talked about not doing something like that. I guess back on the table, that's great. If we can, if we have to find out about it awesome, that's fine. I just, again.
And we'll share.
I think opening up on Main Street is a great idea.
The number of spaces on the main campus, so that you can, you know, have the fully informed judgment, you know, by the sense of no.
Regardless of bus driver, there is a huge safety concern to tell somebody to walk from Main Street to the school. That's, I think, my bigger issue, regarding the whole situation. So I just wanted to make sure that it wasn't going to be like, we have to do this now.
It'd be a path, so it's, it'd be a path from, from.
We have to get it cleared through Concom, but it has no walking path.
I just, I'm just advised, one of those things, that just, people walking in the woods potentially at night, regardless of where we are, it just doesn't sit right.
Those are the updates?
Can I give you one more last one? You know, we were talking about the fill that would have to be trucked in for the foundation to raise everything up. Is that's one of those items that the state doesn't reimburse you for? Because it's.
Not, not literally, no.
There were some items that were.
There's a couple ways to think of it, but they have a cap on the cost per square foot of building the building, of constructing the building. And they have a cap on how much of the construction cost can go towards the site. And so invariably, every project are over those caps. Every project built in Massachusetts. So it's a little bit unrealistic to say certain parts of the site work are not eligible for reimbursement. Doesn't mean, you know, in and of themselves they're ineligible, but because the site work is over and above, you could say, well, those parking spaces or that pavement or, you know, that football goalpost is.
It's safe to say that even without the ninety-nine space option going onto Main Street, our site costs will go beyond the reimbursable amount. And we'll be able to call out the cost and then make an educated decision of how or if it gets bundled into the, into the project.
That additional parking space that we've been talking about a lot, I'm hoping that it's actually got one, well, you can only, I was hoping that it would be able to be wider than a walking path and that you could drive from that parking to onto the campus.
That, that, that's not going to be the case. It's a west point about, my personal reservations from a supervisory point of view would be students, students who are athletes, lady things, the watchability of that space, the monitoring of that space. There's potential for other low frequency overflow space, use it for two years with gravel from construction workers, turn it into a place that horticultur can practice with his equipment, or the junior varsity golf team can practice putting. Or, or, or none of the above. Because if it's not reimbursable, it's a decision the district could make ten years from now to do something with. And we leave it out of the scope of work now.
Okay. Okay.
I make the motion, please.
Good job. I'll get that, I'll get that.
We got, we got a lot of buildings in pain, you guys, we got, we got talking.
Okay, nothing else. I go, I think we need a motion to adjourn. So the school building. Second by Rockland, no doubt?
Yep.
I cannot call vote, Watteau would yes. Tony, yes. Sandy Ballman?
Yes.
George Cooney?
Yes.
Jim Coughlin?
Yes.
Bob Mahoney?
Yes.
Jack Manning?
Yes.
Bob Nelson?
Yes.
Frank Bullwood Jr.?
Yes.
Tom Patrick Sally?
Yes.
Dustin Rinn?
Yes.
Ian Shawoogee?
Yes.
Keith Boyle? Meeting adjourned, the school building committee meeting is adjourned.
I reopen the school committee meeting at this point. As there may be a couple comments to the school committee. Eric Van Nissen, we move on to make a motion, accept a motion to approve the minutes?
Second?
Motion, Situit, second Whitman. All those in favor, they will call vote. Abington?
Yes.
Oh, Hasid?
Yes.
Annover?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Rockland, yes. Situit?
Yes.
And Whitman? Yes, that is a vote. Sid, over to the treasurers report, Jim?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On the cover, this is most important, have a couple pictures of graduation. One is of you, Mr. Boyle, needing out of his troops out after the field. And it was also a picture from Abington Foundry Day, of the food truck anticipating over there, which is a day. We have two pages, second page, I added positioning, competition. Along with our work reserve numbers. During the month of May, the revenue, we received one point six six three million dollars from our, around the final installment from our member accounts. Whitman was the one that was, that came in after the end of May. So that has been received, because then we received all of our other information from chapter seven and so forth. So overall, the revenue for the month was a little over two point one billion. The last page is the payroll. I've added another column, budget transfers that we, that was done in the year and then proposed, just to keep things in line. So it's not a lot of negative numbers at the heart, right? But the expense column, payroll, one point one million dollars. There was a free payroll month in May, which is always, you know, interesting for the, for the staff. Other than that, we had a lot, we had a lot, you know, a lot of, it's this time of year when all of the staff, staff submitting all their professional development expenses that they had throughout the year, so that was fourteen thousand dollars. It was usually, it was higher than normal. Other than that, as we go down, there's a lot of maintenance and repairs that are being done on the building now. So both for the fact that we have, you know, major needs, plus we have some budgeted savings elsewhere in the budget. We have health insurance, again, with some big number, one hundred forty-two thousand. So overall, it's one point five million of支出 that was here in proportion.
I'll take a motion to adjourn before? No more? Second Whitman, Hanover? Abington?
Yes.
Oh, Hasid?
Yes.
Hanover?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Rockland, yes. Situit?
Yes.
And Whitman? That is a vote. That is a vote. Transfers stabilization, Jim?
Okay, we have a couple motions that are in the package. A couple years ago, we realized that a lot of these motions need to be done before the end of the school year. One of them, the first one is to motion number one. It's hereby moved to recover four hundred fifty-six thousand dollars from the FY twenty-four surplus revenue to fund the contract to buy three buses off the state contract for the recommendation of the superintendent for four hundred fifty-six thousand dollars.
Okay, you second?
Second.
And well, those in favor, we go to vote here, Abington?
Yes.
Oh, Hasid?
Yes.
Annover? Here, Anderson?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Rockland, yes. Situit?
Yes.
And Whitman?
Yes.
That is a vote. Transfer number three, Jim?
Motion number two. Every year, we were allowed to put up the five percent of our town assessments into our stabilization account. Over the past many years, we've transferred money to stabilization as part of the budget. This budget year, we did not have any transfers into stabilization for the budget. So we have the full amount available at the end of the year to transfer to, into stabilization. So it's, it's hereby moved to transfer four hundred twelve thousand eight hundred fifteen dollars and seventy cents from FY twenty-four surplus revenue to transfer funding to the stabilization fund for improvements on the social district, school district campus. For improvements to the social district, school district campus and transportation is a little add-on there. Further recommendation of the superintendent director. I believe the transfer to the stabilization is a two thirds vote.
Yes. It does. It is two thirds vote. Take a motion on that?
So.
Motion Whitman?
Second.
Second Abington? This would be twice two thirds vote. Abington?
Yes.
Oh, Hasid?
Yes.
Annover?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Rockland, yes. Situit?
Yes.
And Whitman?
Yes.
This is unanimous.
Does it transfer a jinx? Then we just have a couple transfers, one, some four thousand dollars for the advertising budget and five thousand for the crowd budget. And that, we identified savings in the transportation, for the transportation expenses for the non-people transferring for six thousand. So we're making a total of six thousand dollars in transfers this month.
So more? Second motion, Hanover, second to Situit? We'll call vote, Abington?
Yes.
Oh, Hasid?
Yes.
Annover?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Rockland, yes. Situit?
Yes.
And Whitman?
Yes.
That is a vote. Any other update, Jim?
Yes, I met with Charlie Work, our insurance agent last week. We reviewed all of our fiscal twenty-five policies. He filled it out at one point, because we're all in the same office, I was able to invite Crystal into the meeting to talk about all the cybersecurity and all the other insurance that we have related to IT department. And overall, I think we stood the deck pretty well at the, at the budget map. And we haven't identified about a five, six thousand dollars savings from what we budgeted last year. Not a lot of money, but we budgeted well for twenty-five hundred.
Okay, thank you, Jim.
Superintendent Director, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, very briefly. And thank you for members of the committee able to attend our class of twenty twenty-four graduation. It went very smoothly, thanks to the administrative team and faculty who pulled off a wonderful event, a lot of events to end the school year. It feels a lot on June twenty-sixth. We've been out of school now for a couple of weeks. You know, we don't often see that, good weather, so we're happy about that. One item is just to tell you that there were some textbook adoptions I'm going to move forward from our English, Allied Health and Computer Information Technology departments. It does not require a vote, but is something I bring to the agenda to make you aware. Other than, Mr. Chair, that's the expensive buyer report. Okay.
I'll take a motion on the student handbooks. They're already in the, they're going to be a packet, yes, I just like to entice.
We don't need to vote on those.
Oh, we don't need to?
That student handbook loses that.
Okay, thank you. Right now, one of the new business here is, I look at a motion to approve Tom's Bay, two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four school year, in which we were proficient trading and proficient in all four standards. So, motions, Situit, second by Abington. All those in favor, we'll call vote, Abington?
Yes.
Oh, Hasid?
Yes.
Annover?
Yes.
Anderson?
No.
Noel?
Yes.
Rockland?
Yes.
Situit?
Yes.
And Whitman?
Yes.
Student handbook, Dr. Hickey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. One item under new business is to get a motion to approve the changes that the administrators have brought forward for the twenty-four, twenty-five student handbook.
I'll take a motion on that?
Second motion.
Take a motion, Noel, second. Second Whitman? We'll call vote. Abington?
Yes.
Oh, Hasid?
Yes.
Annover? Here, Anderson?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Rockland, yes. Situit?
Yes.
And Whitman?
Yes.
Yes, that is a vote on the student handbook. And we're over to the new business also. I'm sorry, Hickey?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I had the opportunity to meet Marshfield's new appointed representative, Joseph Zambella.[1668.61] And it will be effective July first. It will be appropriate for this, the school committee to make sure that he has full voting power on the school building committee, effective July first.
That being good, that is a motion to accept Joseph Zambella as the Marshfield representative to this social district school building, uh, school.
I'll second that.
Okay. Motion Hannover, second by Whitman? Any discussion? All votes in favor, Abington?
Yes.
Oh, Hasid?
Yes.
Hannover, yes. Hanson?
Yes.
Noel? Rockland, yes. Situit?
Yes.
And Whitman?
Yes.
Any requests for action?
Can we jump over the superintendent?
No, no. Do you want to pick exact name? You can stop the economy.
Yeah, who's that, isn't it?
There any comment on that?
No. I just, I look at the evaluation, and you, as it puts down, you always underestimate its point of view on your work, you know.
Well, I did, I did make a comment, yeah. But that's, thank you. Any questions? Everybody, I will just make the announcement that everybody else knows that Friday, Fox twenty-five zip trip is in Rockland, the food trail will be there in the morning. Uh, we are expected that for the, the lady from Fox, that's, that will have some, by time at nine oh seven AM, that would be on camera for it, so. So looking forward to that Friday.